Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February workshop. We do have a number of people remotely joining us, so I do welcome everybody. And we also have Ms. Tammy Thompson, Jennifer Fight, Emmy Faust, Andrea Stewart, who I'd like to welcome to the AC Valley School Board Workshop today. She's our new Assistant Business Manager, and of course, Erin Heil here at the district. We are socially distanced, and we all have our mask on. Just a quick reminder, just make sure your mic is on mute. If you'd like to talk, just unmute yourself, raise your hand, or just jump on in. With that being said, we'll jump right into the agenda. Letter I, Tammy, can you do the rule call, please?
Carrie Armagast.
Here.
Megan Dreer. Jennifer Fight.
Here.
Diane Page.
Here.
Corey Sherman.
Here.
Lena Southworth.
Yes, definitely.
Here.
All right, thanks, Daryl. Talk to you tomorrow.
Kelly, your mic is on.
Bye.
Kelly Chwilliger.
Here.
Your mic was on a little bit ago. And Mark Vertell.
Here.
Thank you, Tammy. At this time, we do not have any public participation. Dewey Urban did send a update on the baseball trip, and we do have that on the agenda a little bit later on to discuss. This evening, we do not have any presentations. And at this time, I'll see if there's any board concerns coming either here from the district or somebody joining us virtually.
David, I did. I received a concern just about prom, but I think we're going to address that later in new business, maybe. Is that right, Jen?
Yeah, I think she might be having technical issues over there, but yeah, we'll bring it up during a new bus.
Perfect.
As we move down through the agenda. Whoops. Okay, let's try that again. Moving down through the consent agenda, we have one conference request, and that's on page four. And that comes from myself, as part of the passive Superintendent's Association. And we have Dr. Bill Daggett coming in to speak to us. It was to be face to face, but you know, for obvious reasons, it will be held virtually. So on March 29th, paid for through Title II A. Bill Daggett is presenting a session on preparing students for the future, not our past. So obviously, in COVID days, we've really advanced education, at least in my opinion. So we'll continue to share different perspectives as far as what we can look for moving forward. And I think that should be a really good workshop for me to attend. It'll be done virtually, I'll do it here on campus. And hopefully benefit from that. Under Finance and Purchase, we don't have the reports ready for the board. If there's any questions or concerns, you know, I'd be willing to answer them. We do have Emmy here today, and as I stated earlier, Andrea Stewart's here. She did complete her first day. So she'll be learning quite a bit as we move forward. Moving into Personnel, letter A, B, and C are all connected to one another. We do have employee number 81 asking for four FFCRA days. Employee number 294 asking for two days. And then employee number 27 asking for 10 days of FFCRA leave. The appropriate paperwork is on file, and everybody is eligible for those particular days. And the school board can vote for those to be PISers related days as well. We also have on letter C, we have employee 27. They're requesting FMLA leave. It'll be used intermittently, and they'd like to utilize the sick days concurrent with the leave. And I'll be working with that particular employee as we move forward. Down at the bottom of page one, letter E, we do have Mike Waggle being recommended as the assistant baseball coach with no years of experience as a varsity baseball coach. He did volunteer for a good number of years, but according to the contract, we'll start him out at $1,427. And that is a recommendation by Dr. Jordan, Dr. DiFulio, and Dewey R. Moving over to the top of page two, letter F. Unfortunately, we're presented with Mark Grass, letter of resignation. Mark got a job offer closer to home. You know, by no means does Mark not like his job here at AC Valley. Just the timing and location is I'm going to pull him from us. With that being said, we do have a request down on letter G to advertise for the vacated position. I also have Mark out there looking, and if anybody on this call knows of any police officers who are looking for work, please send them our way. Mark's last day is at the end of March. In addition to that, we have letter H and I under Personnel. We have a resignation as a part-time custodian, Tiara Page. Tiara got a full-time job down working on governmental contract at the mines, which we wish her the best of luck. But we do have to fill that position, and we also have another three-hour position that has not been filled. And if you remember, we had two of our part-time permanent custodians move into the grant-funded temporary four-hour position during the day. So we'll hire somebody on at three hours, hopefully two people. And you know, they'll be here for the duration of the SR2 grant. Are there any questions or need for further clarification on any of those items under Personnel?
David, can you clarify for me, does the amount that's being requested or the request from the personnel for the leave, are you figuring in the PISers with that or not?
Yes, that'll be something that the board can vote on, but yes, I'm we'd make the recommendation to approve all those days with PISers tied into it.
Okay.
Anybody else under Personnel before we move on through the agenda? This evening, we have nothing under Instructional Services. During the voting meeting, we'll provide you with the district reports. And then under Policy, these are recommendations from PSBA. We have three policies in front of you, and really, we're not changing much on policy 332, working periods. The bolded print that's in that document will show you the changes. The board has the authority to make modifications to the school calendar and the school schedule is necessary to meet the instructional and health and safety needs of the students and staff. And again, it's outlined that we will follow the administrative compensation plan, the collective bargaining agreements and such. It just provides us with a little bit more flexibility here at the district. And then down below, they just talk about the additional duties that have popped up, and it's addressed within there that the building principal or the immediate supervisor can work with their particular staff members. On policy 309.1, telework. We've been doing some telework. We try to do our work here at campus, but there are certain times that we do have some staff telework. So underneath this policy, PSBA did a nice job on making updates. They started out with definitions, and you can take some time read down through there. And then they outlined a number of guidelines. And again, I have the school board look these over, and I went through initially and checked off on a few that I thought would be applicable to this particular policy. If there's any additional guidelines we'd like to add to it, remove, we can. If you remember, the boxes that are checked with the X are the recommendations that I'm making here. PSBA puts down a whole host of them. Again, it's a policy that's ours, so we can adjust accordingly. Under number two, you know, if people are out working from home, they are subject to board policy, administrative regulations, standard code of conduct and such. Number three, the employee's performance shall be monitored and assessed. Number four, we are looking to have a dedicated workspace at home, free of hazards, unique distractions, and to ensure confidentiality of student information, obviously. I do have a workshop later this week that I will be working on, you know, to ensure that we are able to create an environment that's conducive to learning and work. And then I finish it off with nine and 10 must follow the same dress code and working hours as a regular school day. We do have a relaxed dress right now, but it still means that, you know, we have to present ourselves appropriately while working from home. And then also, the teachers submit their lesson plans, so this is pretty much taken care of. Number 10, the employees required to document the job and bed of duties in 30-minute increments. For other staff that may be home for whatever unique reasons, I just figured that would be good accounting and documentation if we were ever monitored. And that's something that we have done in the past with people who have been quarantined or working from home. And then to finish up the policy, school calendar, this is just directly aligned with what we have done this year. The school board has the authority to modify the calendar. You approve the calendar. If there's an emergency crisis that comes up, we can really get creative with that. We've we still want to work and put the 180 days in. If you remember, we modified some of the student days and did additional 80 days at the beginning of the year to provide professional development. We can do that, we can modify other days if need be. If we have a COVID outbreak, we can work from home, we can do a blended approach. It just really provides the school board with the authority to make those alternative means. They also outline remote work for the calendar. So all the days that we've had work from home with our distance learning program, those are approved days that go towards our 180 days. And then also, the flexible instructional days that we've had a couple of, they fall within this document as well. Any kind of alterations and changes to the calendar, I will notify the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Since we were approved with the flexible instructional days, there's no further changes that are needed at this particular time. But those are policies that are being recommended by PSBA, and I have them in front of you. So at this time, are there any changes, further clarifications, or suggestions for improvement? Okay, hearing none, I'll continue on. Those will go in front of the board for the first reading next Monday. Under Facilities, Mark is not here, but he will be presenting a list of up and coming projects. So I've shared those projects with the school board as we get into the budget season. There's a host of items that we've taken care of over the years. But there's a few that we want to continue to discuss. This may not be the year to target some of those projects, but there's a few that we really need to start looking at. For example, the parking lot. The further we let the parking lot deteriorate, the more work, labor, and material it'll take to bring it back up. So we can fill cracks, we can put on some tar on the top of it. But whenever the cracks get so bad, and we have to start milling and repaving, that's where the additional costs come in. So that was something that we talked about last year, the budget wasn't good. So we put a more touring on that request. But that's just one item that we've done a few years ago, and I think it is definitely worth our time. Moving down into Transportation, we do have two items this evening. One's to approve Pam Myers with the 2012 Honda Odyssey added to the Myers Transportation Fleet. And then underneath that, we had a request to have a discussion about the 2021, 2022 bus driver's contract. So Kelly, I'll turn this over to you. I think you were the one who made the request to bring this up this evening.
Yeah, David, I just, we had a discussion, some of the bus drivers had called me about the issue with trying to take lunches out on the snow days. And I just thought, as a board, we might want to discuss together what we think we want them to do and what we feel the recommendation should be on certain days before we actually talk with the bus drivers themselves. I'd like to maybe hear what everybody else's thoughts are as far as do we want to clarify, you know, if it's extremely bad, do we really want to take the chance of them taking their buses out and smashing them up? If the roads are extremely bad to deliver lunches? And I know, last time we did it, there were a lot of lunches that were brought back that weren't actually picked up. So do you know if we make lunches and they're not actually picked up, do we get credit for those? Or are we eating the cost on those?
I'll have Grant report back because I'm not sure about that, Kelly.
So I guess I, the discussion we need to have is, as a board, what do we feel their expectation should be for bus drivers delivering lunches on snow days?
Well, here's my thought, Kelly, about it is that, um, last week, was it last week when this happened? Yeah, last week when this happened. By the time it was, it was time for us to, for lunchtime, when we would typically be delivering, roads were clear. Now, I know some of the back roads were probably not as clear, you know? That's typically how it goes, but I think if, if, you know, the weather is fine and the roads have been cleared by the time it's, we're ready to go for lunches, I don't see a problem with, with requiring them to go out and, and do that. That is my thought about it. Now, if it's horrible and nobody is out on the roads, you know, then, then that's one thing. But I, I think that, you know, there's got to be a really good reason why, why they're not going out.
So my question is, what time do they leave, Jen? Do you know?
I don't know. When they're delivering, it should, it's around 11 o'clock they start, right? I think.
They pick up at 10:45, the lunches.
They pick up at 10:45, okay. Have there been, I was just curious, have there been other days when we were remote that they delivered and the roads were, you know, the weather was questionable? I, I know we've had some bad weather off and on. Does anybody know the answer to that?
There's been a few days where it's been a little bit of, you know, snow out there. Monday, we did not push to deliver because we did have ice, and I didn't feel it was safe. But the other day, and I concur with Jen, I drove in after the two-hour delay, and the main roads were not that bad. But I think maybe this needs to be a further discussion. Do we want to continue on with the flexible instructional days, knowing that the remote learning isn't as productive as face-to-face? You know, I did write the proposal, got it submitted in the PD, and at the time, I thought it'd be a fantastic idea. But again, we're pushing this back on the community. And there's a lot of days in June that we can make up some of these snow days. It would just, you know, eliminate some of the concerns that I've heard as well, Kelly, and the rest.
Well, and just in thinking about that, you know, I had some conversation with some other board members and other districts. Um, and we still have a couple of snow days coming in this calendar, in the school calendar, correct? Yeah, David's shaking his head yes as I'm looking at him. Um, and you know, I think that, um, you know, there, there are times that we need to allow the kids to be kids. And, and you know, maybe we just give them the day off. And, and you know, everybody's trying, this has been difficult. And I think that, you know, maybe we need to reevaluate that. And we've got the snow days, we've put in a couple already that should have been snow days that, you know, or that may have been snow days. But I think that we really need to definitely, you know, we really need to look at that.
Well, and I think when we talked about that originally, we didn't know how long we were going to be remote. So we were going to try to not extend the school year if we didn't have to. But yeah, I agree, Jen, I think we should probably revisit that now. Just with the different things that have been coming to light and just let the kids have a snow day. I think that might be easier on parents too, because if it's a snow day, oh, well. But if it's a, if it's a remote instruction day, then that's a different ballgame for them, that they have to figure out what to do.
The other thing we need to think of, though, switching gears in the middle here, we've already told them we were doing flexible instruction days, and if they've made doctor's appointments for days off that we now are going to have to take for a snow makeup day, that may affect people's schedules.
While they can take, you know, they'll just have to take, not go to school that day. If that's what they've done, they would have missed a day anyway, because everybody knows that snow days can be taken away.
Exactly, until we decided we're doing flexible instruction, which would indicate we wouldn't lose them.
Well, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I didn't quite understand some of the, what was put out, but I don't think we said to them that we were going to use every snow day as a flexible instruction day. What we said was that it was a possibility that we could, and so far, we have. But that, that we didn't say that we're absolutely doing that. What do others think in terms of the bus contracts and, you know, utilizing them for lunches and the snow makeup days that, I'd like some others to jump in with your opinions?
I think if we're going to do the flexible instruction day, that we need to really develop some very clear-cut guidelines on what the expectations are for the bus drivers. You know, what we're, you know, what's going to happen if the roads are bad? You know, I just think we have to come up with some very clear-cut guidelines. And I'm fine with that, but I don't want to risk bus driver safety for revenue. You know, like, and I think that was kind of like the perception, like they care more about dollars. I know that was said, they care about the money, you know, and they're not concerned about our safety. But
Sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
I think Monday, you know, I don't, I think by the time the roads, you know, by the time lunches would have gone out, I'm sure that the roads were clear. I, I, but I wasn't out driving other than locally, you know, like Six Points area. But I, I see no issue with having them deliver the lunches as long as it's not putting them at risk, you know, safety-wise.
You make a good point, and I have been approached by several other staff members because the teacher stayed at home and all other staff members reported, and they were concerned about their safety as well. That we had other staff members report. So, you know, it's kind of like, what's the difference between the buses and, and staff members driving? And to be quite honest with you, the buses go much better than most of the vehicles. And that we do have staff members driving in here. So again, another argument, I'd be able to make the, eliminate flexible instructional days for the remaining portion of the year and just take the day off if we have a inclement weather pattern coming into the district.
And something else I wanted to clarify too, and I'm not quite sure how this got, got started because I heard the same thing in terms of, oh, it's about the revenue, it's about the money. Let me be really clear, no, it's not about the revenue, it's not about the money. It's about making sure our kiddos have lunches and breakfast for that day. I mean, we've had conversations around this board table about, you know, sometimes this is the best meal the kids get during the day is their lunch. And we want to make sure that if we have the ability to do that, we are. So I don't know where that, that piece about the revenue came in. Of course, we have to look at the money, we have to look at the budget, we, you know, we're, it's crunch for everybody right now, but that is not what this is about. That's, this is about making sure our kiddos have something to eat.
And Jen, I agree with you completely, and what I was referencing was, I think that was what was said in a Facebook post that kind of sparked some of this, do you know what I mean? It was, I think that was with the comment that was made by someone out on Facebook that stirred the pot.
Yeah, I think you're right. I didn't, I may not have seen the same exact post you did, but I did see something about it, which I did not respond to. But, um, that's why you're, when you said that, Carrie, it kind of sparked my memory in terms of what I was seeing. And I, and I was like, that is just not the case, and I want to be very clear about that.
Well, I didn't, I didn't look on Facebook, but I'm just going by what I've talked with other, some of the bus drivers who called me. The roads were not good that day. They were extremely icy because I had to go to work and drive home on them. They were still bad any afternoon. And I can understand their point, they've got an $80,000 or $85,000 bus, or it might cost more. And is it worth us having that driver smash that bus up? And then we're out of a bus that we need for the rest of the year?
Yeah, I absolutely can understand that as well. I mean, you know, we want to make sure that, that they're good to go for the rest of the year as it's been difficult this year, you know, as at the end of last year. So I think whoever said about, you know, let's, let's try to be clear about what we're going to be doing, you know, and set some, some more definite guidelines up. I think that's probably, you know, what we need to do so that we're not running into this in the future. But I think we definitely need to have some more conversation about the flexible instruction days and kind of where we're going with that.
Yeah, the one bus driver said to me, they, they would rather deliver them with their own vehicles than take their buses out if it needs to be done. But I agree with you, there's, we've got to have some clear guides, but it's just hard to know because you don't know what the roads are going to be like from one part of our district to the other.
Right, and you know, where I live, the roads can be clear, but you know, Kelly, where you're at, it could definitely be a whole world of difference. So, you know, that does make it challenging.
I appreciate the conversation, and everybody makes a really good point. You know, as superintendent, I do work with the revenue and expenditures every single day. And to miss a day of revenue coming into the cafeteria, and again, I can't agree with Jen, I mean, it's about feeding the kids, but also not working the staff and then having them come back in over the summertime when we don't have kids here, it just doesn't make sense to me. I don't feel as if we are in the position where we can, you know, have those days. I I don't feel as if we are in the position where we can, you know, have those days and and not be able to utilize our staff and and feed our kids. So I I'll be watching the weather very closely. And and if I feel as if the morning is too bad to come in, I'm just going to cancel school altogether. And I I could put together a message and send out to the community. Um, I really didn't rule out the flexible instructional days. Great. And and the only reason is because we've had so much different terminology out there, distance learning, remote learning, um, hybrid learning. We had um, you know, face-to-face learning out there. I I was just concerned that I'd confuse too many of our community members, because they have all this educational jargon coming out. So um, you know, I could follow, follow this conversation up with a message out. If that's what the direction the board wants to go or um, not. It's just hard in the morning. You know, when I start watching the weather at four thirty and making the call before five thirty, to be able to, you know, make everybody happy, I guess, with that call, because nobody likes a snow day, me included. I'll be up tomorrow morning with weather pattern coming through. That's kind of why I like to get to the bottom of this conversation, because even though we may have a delay, I don't see it cancelling. But there are two to four inches coming in tonight.
Yeah, it's definitely a a hard thing to to try to kind of look at that and plan out a couple of hours when things move slower, faster or whatnot. But um, I I'm not sure. Um, do folks think that we need to put out some additional information in regards to snow day versus or or the flexible instruction day versus snow day versus remote learning? Uh, do you think we need to try to be clear about that? Or do you think that, you know, moving forward, if we call a snow day, you know, uh, and we would decide to use flexible instruction, that we just do it at that particular point? What are thoughts?
I think we do it at that particular time. When Dave makes the call, we can be clear if we're going to have flexible learning or whatever for that day. I actually talked to Dave earlier this afternoon about this. I think we should keep it the same as it's been in the past. We had a little bit of confusion. Tried it here not too long ago between different parties. We've got snow days, we should do. If it's a two-hour delay, we think school's good enough to have them, we should be having the kids in the school. Because you don't know how many kids actually, they take that as a day. How many get actually get on and and do what they need?
I would agree with you, um, Mark, for sure.
I think it was confusing when we did the two-hour delay and then we went to flexible instruction. I think everybody was confused with that.
Yeah, that was that was a terrible morning and um, absolutely the worst day to rule out flexible instructional days. And we two hours delayed ourselves right into cancellation. And um, you know, I talked to the building principals, we put a plan into place and and rolled it out. I mean, it was it was less than perfect. But with this whole conversation, I do want to give the teachers here at AC Valley all the credit in the world. They 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 had that program up and running. The building principals did a great job. The students are logging on. I mean, that's the little bit of confusion and frustration that we have right here had nothing to do with um, the teaching staff and the students and and the admin that worked on that. There are just those other areas that we can't control. Um, there's a whole host of employees that we have here on campus. And um, I think that's where some of the frustration came from and what precipitated into this conversation. So moving forward, if there's a snow day, we'll call it as a snow day.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, moving, Kelly, I'm sorry, I I jumped right off of that. Was there further discussion that you wanted to have about the contracts for uh, the twenty twenty-one school year? Or or did that conclude your discussion point?
No, that was the only thing I had, David, was I had just gotten calls about about what we wanted to do about that situation.
Okay, great. Then we'll we'll just continue on. And any other questions or or comments, just feel free to email me or give me a a phone call. Underneath miscellaneous, um, I don't know, Jamin and Cory, was there a center update? Or did you want to wait till next Monday?
Um, there wasn't a lot of new stuff. Um, she did say that they are starting the application process for new students. But um, other than that, really not much new. She's still doing a great job up there, so.
Thanks, Cory. Lena, anything from the guy you?
Uh, not really. Um, they talked a little bit about the backpack program that they sent out to some of their school districts. Um, and that was really well received. And I think that's basically it. Nothing really major.
Technology committee, we're uh, scheduling one for the week of March eighth, and Jen's going to get that sent out. Athletic committee, I don't know if there's anybody who would like to report out on that. We've had a couple of meetings. Um, spectators, trying to get as many people in the gym and still stay within the ten percent has been the base of the conversation. Anybody want to jump in and?
Can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
Um, I just got, and I've gotten numerous comments about our live feed for our basketball games. Um, and everybody appreciates it. Is there a way that we could actually have somebody sitting there following the ball instead of having a stationary camera?
That would be very difficult, I believe. Uh, yeah, Aaron's over there shaking his head. That is, I don't think, I are there other schools that are doing that? Not that I remember seeing at all.
When Max went to, well, when Max went to, when they played V C, you, they were sitting there following it with a camera. Like, the whole time, Slippery Rock was following theirs with a camera. Um, so I I was just bringing that up as, you know, a suggestion. Um, because others, I mean, V C, I felt like I was actually sitting sitting there watching them run back and forth. Like, you could tell who the kids were, you could tell everything. Um, and like I said, I mean, the community is very grateful that we have that opportunity. But um, I was just wondering if there's a different way it could be done.
The problem is part of it, and and I'm going to kind of keep my eye on Aaron over there. Uh, from my understanding of this, Lena, we've gotten some new cameras. So that um, and they're stationary mounted there. Um, and that way, there doesn't have to be somebody right there with the camera. Um, so what's happening is that we have somebody going down um, to start that feed at the beginning of the game and making sure that, and and then they function as the game manager for the game. And that way, if there's any problems while they're there, then they can immediately go in and take care of them. Um, and then they they're there to um, you know, turn it off at the end of the night. The problem is they have other game manager functions during that time. And it's, so it's a, you know, they're there to to help us, but um, we don't have somebody dedicated to be there to to be manning that camera the entire time.
Well, Lena, Lena, that would take another person out. And I know you'll volunteer to do it. Absolutely, one hundred percent. I would be grateful to do that, just to sit there and follow the kids, follow the boys and girls. Um, and and, you know, I think that, you know, people, like I said, they're very grateful that they have the opportunity, but they can't even see who if when their kid's on the court, because it's so far, um, so it's just so far back. Um, so, yeah, I'd volunteer to do it. I'm in. Well, just the boys' games. I'm sure we could get a girl's parent to do the girls' games.
Yeah, I I know that there's some discussion, Lena, in terms of, you know, um, where about hosting and where we're going to be hosting and things like that. And and, you know, um, RJ is always taking into consideration um, comments that that he hears about whether it was good or bad, or, you know, and making some tweaks to it and and things like that. And so, you know, um, I I don't, I don't see us moving in the direction of doing the following the ball kind of thing, because of of just how we're set up at this particular point. But, you know, if people have suggestions, keep them coming, because, you know, we're always trying to improve it. I mean, I think it's pretty much here to stay, so we want it to be good.
Jen, this is Lori. Um, I was talking with Tracy Daly. She said the cameras they have at Karn City um, are motion activated, so the camera follows the action. They don't have a person that's actually running it. I know nothing about technology, so I'm just throwing it out there that she was telling me about that.
Uh, Aaron is giving me the sign that those are big dollar cameras.
I was going to say, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's that. He was just giving me that sign. Um, yeah.
If people would like to donate towards that, we'll take all the money they want to send.
Absolutely. We won't turn it down a bit.
Well, I and I did hear too, I think it might have been Scott that made, that mentioned it to to us one time. I don't remember now. But anyway, some of the people that have done that, some of the games that have had somebody following the game right there, they were using their own their own phone and and that, and then live feeding it themselves, like through their private Facebook or something. Good, so that caused an issue um, in that regard. But I think that's kind of why they maybe went to the full screen like they did so that that somebody didn't have to do it in that manner.
And I also think, and I'm not sure, but I think Karn City is, there's districts that are paying a company to do that. And that is expensive as well.
Absolutely. That is like, we're looking at, as RJ and I were talking about that, we're looking at ten thousand dollars. Um, you know, that as like, kind of like that base area to look at. And and I'm, I don't think that we have the ten thousand dollars to put into that at at this particular point.
As a parent, I'm just grateful that we can watch it on, you know, uh, uh, over the the phone or the T V or or whatever, regardless of what it's like. We kids, so I'm not complaining. Um, in fact, our Clarion junior high boys game last week, it was a Clarion parent who was in the stands. So you could hear what the parents were talking about. You could hear all the chatter. But we were still appreciative of the fact that somebody was standing there doing it. Um, so I guess I have just a different perspective on it. I'm just appreciative that we have the opportunity to watch, no matter what it's like. Um, we're grateful that the technology is there for us to to use.
Yeah, and for sure, just to kind of back up what Carrie said as well, you know, when we started with volleyball this year, when we couldn't go to the games, we couldn't see the scoreboard. We didn't have cameras set up to see the scoreboard. So it was like, we were hoping we were somewhere in the ballpark there, you know. And and the cameras were not as good as what um, we've put in now. So, you know, like I said, we'll take any kind of suggestions, because we keep tweaking and 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 making it better um, within the budget restraints that that we have. Um, but we definitely want to hear if somebody's got a good suggestion or wants to make that donation.
Okay, moving down through the agenda, the finance committee update. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow at one o'clock. Mark will be in. Uh, Cory and Megan will have to meet up with Emmy, Andrea and I, and we'll get them caught up. But we've been having a regular meetings. Emmy's been doing an absolutely fantastic job with breaking down the budget through the revenues, expenditures. And uh, we'll be moving into building the twenty-one, twenty-two budget here real soon. On the top of um, page three, I think um, we have a little bit of new business to talk about with the prom. And then I also want to just close by um, letting the board know that I'm going to update our health and safety plan. And I'm going to modify uh, one of the recommendations from the Department of Health uh, that relates to travel. And this was an item that popped up recently, and and I've read that document several times. And um, any child who's under eleven years old can travel and not need to be quarantined and or tested. We have a lot of kids at the elementary who are under eleven years old. And um, I feel as if we have a school age student that travels, they they should be treated just like everybody else to ensure the safety of not only their classmates, but their teachers as well. So I'm going to make that um, change. I'll have that in front of you for Monday to to approve, and I'll resubmit that into the Department of Education. So this time, I'll turn it over to, I think Jen wanted to talk a little bit about prom.
Well, I think Carrie and I might tag team this a little bit, um, because I was approached um, by um, some senior girls, of course, um, asking, you know, did, had we talked about prom? Did we know anything about prom? And what are we doing just because of the timeframe? And um, you know, those of you who've had high school, high school girls know that, you know, right now, this is prime dress shopping season. And, you know, so we're all worried about that. Um, but also too, you know, are we going to do this our last year? Are we going to be able to have it? And so um, I said to them that I would bring this up at the board meeting and um, see where we are. And um, see about some discussion if anybody has um, concerns, issues, um, comments. And then I know Carrie, um, you also had some information too uh, about prom, correct?
Yes. I think the same information that has probably been shared with with David and Bill. But I I'd be happy to share that with the board unless David or or Bill wants to do so.
Go ahead, Karen.
So um, I know that the the advisors are um, you know, looking to move ahead with planning. Um, and th- they definitely want to have prom for the kids, if at all possible. You know, we did, we weren't able to have prom last year. Um, so, you know, they they'd really like to see the kids have a prom. Um, and I from my understanding, they are looking at having an outdoor prom, um, you know, where we kind of lessen that risk, um, weather permitting, of course. And I know they have reached out to um, the D J that they had a deposit on last year. You know, he's he's still honoring that deposit this year, um, going with his available dates, you know, for the month of May, uh, which I think they're looking at May first, um, is when he's available. So hopefully the weather is cooperative and, you know, they can, they can have it outdoors where the kids can spread out and not be in an enclosed facility. But I also know that they don't have the the funds to rent a space. Um, you know, a large venue for in an indoor prom. Um, if if it would come to that, I don't think the funding is there. You know, from the the prom account.
And one of the things um, uh, that Carrie and I had sort of mentioned a little bit, um, you know, it, and I didn't realize that they were going based on the D J uh, and and that availability. Um, so a couple of my comments for the advisors would be, one, um, you know, if we're planning something outdoor, of course, lot, you know, the later in the year we go, hopefully the weather is better. And two, if there is somebody, um, you know, D J wise that has, um, uh, that it has availability later on in the year, would would the D the D J that they were looking at um, give the the kids deposit back for them to be able to utilize that um, with someone else who may have better dates? The the third thing that that pops into my mind is that, um, you know, people, whether, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, the kids put a lot of money into this. So I think that we have to have a backup plan for them for some type of indoor um, availability if we need it, because, you know, it's May. You know, we don't know what the weather is going to be like. We don't know if it's going to be pouring down rain or freezing or, you know, whatnot. And, you know, so um, I think that, you know, we need to, if they can get more information, I know that, you know, outdoors, that that we looked into, I think Jamin and I, I had talked about last year about tents, and the tents are very expensive to rent. Um,
One thing, the years that Mary Rothin did it, she always did it Mother's Day weekend, and it, we've had snow.
Yeah.
Mother's Day weekend. And being in the, in the event venue business, I would strongly suggest third or fourth weekend of May, if you're thinking about side, because chances are it's going to be, it it can be cold or.
I agree with you, Jamin, even if they could go the last weekend of May, or I don't know what.
Well, I think.
Difficult to have in June.
I think there are Saturday dates in May also booked with track events too, which may conflict.
Um, yeah, I can understand that too. Um, you know, maybe they do need to look at, even though the kids graduate May twenty-eighth, our last day of school is that first week of June, you know, nothing says that we can't look at some of the weekends in June either, um, to get some warmer weather, to get some better weather. Um, you know, just to give them the opportunity to do that.
I was going to say even over Memorial Day, but there's that, is the state track meet? If there is such a thing, isn't that always over Memorial Day weekend?
It is, yeah, yeah. So, you know, um.
I think June would be a great idea, just for all the reasons you guys are stating. And um, at least that way we'll be further into vaccination time and.
To have a better idea of what's happening in the world. Yeah, because.
Exactly. Nothing.
Yeah.
Well, I think, um, you know, we're going to run into, we're going to have the same conversations that we had last. you know, we're going to run into, we're going to have the same conversations that we had last year at this time where kids are leaving for the military and, you know, you've got all of this other stuff. So as we move further, there's, there are going to be other things that pop up that um, you know, my feeling is hopefully some of the restrictions start easing up a bit. You know, even if we could spread kids out in the cafeteria and the gymnasium in larger spaces and spread it out that way if we'd have to have something indoors. But, you know, this is something, it does take a lot of planning, not just on the kids' part and the parents' part, but, you know, Megan and Stacy, they've got a lot of time invested in this as well. So trying to give them some clear-cut guidance on what they can do and which direction they can go.
And it's February. We've heard nothing. We've heard nothing. And if you do have it and try to have it inside, keep in mind venues are booked because of people having to put off their weddings from last year. So it would end up probably having to be at the school.
And here's the thing, with homecoming, we tried that, and hardly any kids was wearing their mask. I mean, I have fifteen pictures of kids not wearing masks. Downright not wearing masks. So I don't, I, if they want to have a prom, have a prom, but they have to enforce the rules. You know what I'm saying? You can't walk in and take your mask off and be like, well, he's my boyfriend. I'm dancing with him. No, you're wearing the mask. I mean, that to me is like a huge rule breaker. And if they can't guarantee that those masks are going to be worn, then I don't want a prom.
Lena's, Lena volunteers to be the bouncer.
I I volunteer every time to be the bouncer. Nobody will take me up on it.
I want to watch. I would, can we give them a suggestion tonight that we want them to book it in June so they can get started?
Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Jordan's on here. We could set up a meeting with the prom advisors.
Well, you know, the problem you're going to run into. Sorry, David, I'm sorry. And I think my connection cut out for a minute. So I think, you know, part of the problem is the DJ and trying to go, you know, they already have a deposit down with that DJ. Um, but then prices for that DJ, or prices for DJs go up in June because it's prime wedding season. So, you know, the prices go up. And they're working with a really limited budget. So, you know, I think it's
I think they chat, have they checked for June? Do they have an idea of what the price difference is going to be and availability? I mean, I think that's where they should start.
And if we do it in June and we don't have any morning to get up to, could we do it during the week? I mean, would that, there be more available on DJs and maybe at a cheaper price like the Wednesday, June second or third, whatever date that could be? We could have it here on campus. It's not going to cost them anything, just labor of um, you know, setting up the gymnasium. There's no activities going on in there. And heck, if we want to do something out on the football field, we can get a tent too and kind of make it a a larger venue. And then that could spread out to kids as well. But I I do compare with what Lena said earlier, we do have forced master rules. I mean, it's just the right thing to do right now.
What if, what if we limited the um, the students to maybe juniors and seniors? To reduce the numbers where we could spread them out a little bit more?
It's not a bad, it's not a bad idea. It's just, you know, the sophomore parents are going to be giving you a phone call, probably trying to, you know, make their argument to have their kids in there because it's special for them as well.
I mean, if we give them direct directive now about a June date, hopefully that would give everybody time to plan in case, you know, there's something that else going on in June that they knew of. I just think you're going to have, I agree with Jemina, you're going to have much better weather and if, and then if we have to have it at the school, we could do some outside things.
Yeah, and I don't see a problem with during the week. I mean, the bottom line is if the kids want the prom, they're going to do it when we can, you know, under the guidelines that we need to do. And and, you know, I I think that they could do it during the week and have some more um flexibility in, you know, um.
And if you want to rent a tent, it would be easier to rent during the week because when I checked in it for homecoming, that was the issue. They had so many tents going out for weddings because they were trying to all do outdoor weddings. Yes. Week, you would have a better um chance of getting a large tent.
Plus, they would have more time to decorate. We wouldn't have to be missing three days of school to decorate. Um, if we do it in June.
That's a good point. Talk to uh Dr. Jordan and the two prom advisors and we'll set up a meeting and I'll invite school board member too, if we'd like to have a small committee from the board come in to offer ideas as well, because sometimes, you know, in the the school, we look at it just from one set of lenses. So um, I'll start working on that. I'll collaborate with Dr. Jordan and get back to you.
And if it helps, I would gladly donate the tent. The price of the tent or make arrangements for the tent, whatever you want to say. I don't have a tent that big.
Thank you. That's very nice.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end. That was uh new business. There's nothing under old business. Is there anything that needs to be discussed before we um conclude meeting this evening? Harry, none. We'll go ahead and uh log off. Thank you all for your time this evening, and uh please be safe tomorrow morning out there in the roads.
Hey, David, I have one question for Tammy. Um, has she, she usually gives us information for those of us that need to be on the ballot for the next school board election?
I haven't received anything yet for you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll keep you posted. All right. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, everybody. Have a good.